All right, ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise and join Councilman Bathroyd in the pledge to our flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for our prayer, please.
Will you bow with me? Our heavenly Father, we just want to thank you tonight for a new year where we see new dreams, new hopes, new challenges, and we just thank you for the visions that we have and the opportunities that we have in this new year. We just thank you for this city, and we thank you for all the workers that helped make this town what it is. We just ask your blessing tonight on our council meeting and give our council members wisdom that only comes from above in decision-making. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Call to order, our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of January 16th. Our second item on the agenda is public comments, community announcements, and recognition, and I believe we have a wonderful recognition to present. Chief?
This on? Yes. Recently, we had Lieutenant Gary Haddock retire after 23-plus years of service with the department, and we can't say enough about your service. I see you're not shaving now. I don't blame you of it. I want to give you this plaque from me, presented to Lieutenant Gary Haddock, badge number 14, in honor of his retirement. We honor you for the many years sacrificed to serve your fellow man with courage, strength, commitment, and integrity. We, your humble and grateful coworkers, thank you and wish you Godspeeds on your next journey. And he served from 03/01/1995 to 12/01/2018, signed by me and the men and women of the Guthrie Police Department.
Can we get plenty of photos, sir?
Very much. I appreciate you doing this.
Surprised you're not up there, Mayor. Gary, thank you. Do we have, let's see, I think the other announcements all pertain to some item on the agenda. Item number three is a consent agenda, which is the approval of the Public Works Authority Meeting of December 19th. I'll entertain a motion, so moved in a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? Submit your votes, please.
All votes are in.
Let's see the votes. Unanist approval of all those present to approve that consent agenda. That is the last item on our agenda, and so I designate the adjournment of our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting and call to order now our City Council Meeting of January 16th. The second item on our agenda is consent agenda, which consists of the approval of our minutes of our city public, our Guthrie City Workshop of December 19th, our approval of the minutes of our City Council Meeting of also of December 19th, our approval of the permanent retirement of Guthrie Police Badge Number 14, and authorize the awarding of Badge Number 14 to Lieutenant Gary Haddock, as well as the service weapon Glock 22 upon his retirement as a token of appreciation and respect for his 23 years of faithful service to the city of Guthrie and the Guthrie Police Department. Item number D is the award of bid number 2017-09 for the paving of sidewalk near the Guthrie Upper Elementary School on Walnut from Lamp lighter to Hillcrest. Item number E, these are all in the consent agenda. Item number E is the approval of amendment to property lease agreement hangar number 20B to Ron and Tony Jewell. Item number F is approval of the amendment to property lease agreement number hangar 20C, same owner. Item number G is the approval of change order number one, which is a reduction of $6,188 between the city of Guthrie and Wise Electric on runway lights at the airport. Item number H is the approval of the request from Suzanne Brown for a lump sum payment from the city of Guthrie and her retirement plan. And item number I is the confirm and the mayor's appointment of Carol McPeak to fill an unexpired term in the, on the Historic Preservation Commission, and James Hensley to be approved for a new term as the Historic Preservation, or on the Historic Preservation Commission from the, he's the representative from the state, or the city, I'm sorry, county Historical Society. It's a long group of items on the consent agenda. If there are none that want to be pulled out of that, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
To approve all the items on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion of any of those items? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanist approval of all consent agenda items, number A through I, approved. Item number three, public hearing, discussion, and possible action on ordinance number 3313 to grant request approval from Melvin Joe and Laura Ann Evans to rezone property from R1 to A2. You have staff comments?
Rebecca will make staff comments, and then I have a comment before we open the public hearing.
A letter was brought by today by Joe Evans, a letter of support that I'll pass out now. I'm happy to answer any questions. He is requesting a rezone from R1, which is our single-family residential district, to A2, which is our suburban district, in hopes of having a few horses and a barn. A large portion of his parcel lies within the 100-year floodplain, and you can see that in your map attached. Currently, in this section of land, everything is R1. We currently do not have any agricultural zoning in this area. I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Evans. Actually, he came to the city to acquire a permit when he first came and told us that his realtor had, who sold him the property, had told him it was already zoned ag. So he came to the city initially to get a building permit, not a rezoning application. So I had to do the tough job of telling him that it was actually zoned R1. Also included in the packet is the original annexation when it was brought in in 1980, as well as the designation of the R1 zoning. That's all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
So none of the land behind it is agriculture, is what you're saying?
No.
Because there's a railroad track there, and I'm pretty sure it's agriculture from there on.
Yes, in a separate section.
Right. It joins to agriculture.
Me to the north.
To the north.
That's what I thought.
Uh-huh.
I would like to point out, on the agenda tonight, it's either to approve or disapprove the ordinance to rezone. There is another alternate, alternative. I've talked to the city attorney, and the property zoning could be split. So there would be the option that, given the legal description to do it, a meets-and-bound legal description, the part of the property in the floodplain could be rezoned to A2 as requested to accommodate the livestock or horses, and then maybe a small segment outside of the floodplain where the stable could be built on high ground so you wouldn't have to deal with all the floodplain regulations. The balance of the property that's outside of the floodplain to the east would, could remain R1, and that would provide a buffer between where the livestock is and the individuals that have single-family lots to the east. To the west of the property is all floodplain, and I just want to make sure that city councils fully aware of all their options. If that is an option you want to pursue, of course, we have to have the legal description prepared to split the zoning on the property and bring it back at another meeting to actually adopt the ordinance once we have those legal descriptions. We just want to make sure, as you, as you think about this, go through discussion, that you realize that option is available to you.
Is that, is that an option that Mr. Evans has to bring up?
He does not, he can request it, but it's an option that could be proposed to him by staff or by council, but, but clearly, when he makes his remarks, he can tell us if that's an option that would be acceptable to him or not.
Okay, all right. Do you have anything else, Rebecca? Any other staff have any comments? Okay. Mr. Evans? This is in the public comments section. Introduce yourselves, yourself and your address, please.
Joe Evans, 5921 Morgan Drive here in Guthrie, Oklahoma. All right, so I'm the owner of the property. It's a large piece of property. It's about 14 acres. Of that 14 acres, about half of it is in the flood zone. So it's zoned R1 residential. I can't build a house in the flood zone, so we look at what can be done in the flood zone. What can I do with that other six or so acres of land? So when you look on page 70, it says that there are some things that are allowed in a flood zone. Those things are agriculture, livestock, agricultural buildings. It says it is intended that this land be set aside for agricultural use until the flood zone is abated. So that's perfect. That's exactly what I'd like to do with this land. We always worry about the impact upon our neighbors when we're asking for a zoning change. I think everybody deserves their time in the sun, as long as they don't cast a shadow on somebody else. So if we look at my property, to the north is the Taylor Trust. That is being used, even though it's zoned R1, it's grandfathered in, it's agricultural land. They use it for cows, always has been, probably always will be. They recently put in a pipeline that I certainly don't object to because it kind of gives me a little privacy. Nobody's going to build a house there. That is residential, and I have representatives from the Taylor Family Trust to tell you, what I believe they're going to tell you is, they have no objection to my horses being down there on that pasture. As we go to the west, as you mentioned, that's all floodplain. We've got the railroad berm, and up on top of the hill, I have a letter from those neighbors saying they look forward to me putting the horses on it. When you look to the south, there's the city land. Of course, that's never going to be residential. Nobody's going to build a house below the dam. When you go across the street, the two neighbors are Mitchell and Westbrook. I have letters from both of those supporting my horses on that land. The only person that has, that I believe has a standing to object is, is Mr. Frye, who is to my east. They're concerned about me adversely affecting the value of their property. They have it broken up into little one-acre lots that they'd like to sell off. My horses are going to be down in the floodplain. They have more than another lot insulating between them and my horses, anyway. From my original proposal, when I thought I was after a special use permit, I offered to cross fence it. If my, if it's going to bother my neighbors, we'll cross fence it. It's a big piece of property. I also have plenty of, plenty of land down there.
What type of barn do you plan on putting?
We haven't gotten that far.
Yeah.
What type of barn would, what type of barn would you like for me to put up?
Well, I don't, you know, I'm just curious if you've thought that out.
Yeah, probably a 30 by 40. If it's zoned A2, I think I could do a metal building, but it's going to be down about 50, 50 yards from that berm, so it's going to be down at the bottom. If you're, are you guys familiar with that property?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think everybody here is.
Down there, yeah. So we're arguing about three horses in, that are spots down there, really.
What if it was a special use to R1 and you couldn't put a metal building?
Then I'll put some other kind of building up. What I would like to do, and what makes perfect sense to me, is we need to sell some property to do this, to do that. We paid cash for the property. I want to sell, I want to move the horses onto it, sell the land where I have the horses. Now, that pays for my barn. We sell another piece of property in, that's outside, that gets in Grady County, that pays for the house. Then we sell our house and put the money back. So we're talking about three horses, a small barn, and a nice house up on the hill on 14 acres. Big piece of property.
But in fact, your request is to rezone the entire 14 acres?
It seems.
Not just what's in the flood zone.
It seems simpler. I'm just, I'm just trying to get along. It seems so much simpler to just rezone the entire property, but if that is still objectionable to any of my neighbors, I'm completely okay with just rezoning the part that's in the floodplain. That's, that's my original intent, anyway, that the pasture will be down on the bottom, the house will be up on the hill. It's a little more work for the city to split that. It's a little more work for me to get a, to get it surveyed. If that is a compromise that makes everybody happy.
It's not that much more work. I've, my land's set up similar.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I've done a little bit of research, but not a lot. I'm certainly no expert on this, and I haven't seen any other property that was split. If that's an option that's acceptable to the council and to the neighbors, that's a perfect solution. That's exactly what I've asked for from the beginning. I want my three horses down in the pasture, a nice little barn, and, and a pretty house up on the hill, a few white fences.
Clearly, that's the picture that you painted before and now, but the reality is, legally, if we rezone all 14 acres, you could have those horses on the east side of your property.
Right. The, the only advantage to me for rezoning all of it is a little bit of convenience in that if we rezone only the floodplain, I need to put in a temporary fence before I put in the nice fence. It's just an inconvenience, but that is my, my final plan, anyway. So.
But, and what I heard you say, not putting words in your mouth, is that what had been talked about as a potential is acceptable.
Is an absolute perfect solution. If that makes everyone happy, I am completely agreeable to zoning only the part that's in the floodplain.
Other questions of Mr. Evans?
No, that was my question, if, if that was going to be the acceptable fix for this, for everybody to get along and be happy, then.
Would that have to, if we were going to do something like that, would that have to come back to another council?
What we would do is we would have Mr. Evans have a survey, so we could have a legal description that would, and it wouldn't have to follow identical, but squared up, where the, on the one side that's in the floodplain would be zoned A2, and then on the east side, the high ground would be zoned R1. And so we need that legal description to prepare a new ordinance, and as soon as we got the legal, we could put that ordinance on a city council agenda. You've already met the requirements of the two public hearings. You won't have to have another public hearing. You just have to act on the ordinance.
If I may, the, Mr. Frye's concern was the value of his lots. The lot that's next to me, I looked on the survey, it's 192 feet across, so from my property line to where the, the flood zone begins is greater than 192 feet. It's 200 and some odd. So he would have at least the equivalent of another lot to insulate my horses from his property.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments that you'd like to leave with us at this time?
Oh, I'm sure as soon as I sit down, there will be.
[laughter]
Mr. Frye, and I appreciate his position, but he, he voiced objections to everything horrible that could happen, from a trailer house to a hog farm to a, to a daycare center. I have a warranty deed covenant. I can't put a trailer house, even if we zone it A2 down there. Hog farms are prohibited. I have no use for a daycare center. All of those things would require special use permits, anyway. I just want to be a good neighbor. We're looking at three horses, pretty fence, little barn, and a nice house on the hill.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Bugby?
Good evening.
Identify yourself and your address, please.
My name is Ed Bugby. My address is 408 Kinswick Court in Edmund, Oklahoma. I am a property owner here in Guthrie. I'm here to actually support Joe and, and, and his conquest. I wanted to bring a point of order. It has been both spoken word and written word that apparently Councilman Taylor has claimed that he actually owns the property, that's the Taylor Trust property that joins or falls in behind his, and that is absolutely untrue. That, that property is still in the name of Julia D. Taylor, has been for many decades. I, you can check with the Logan County, we paid the taxes on it. My wife is the executor of the estate of the trust. Jan Taylor Bugby is the executor of that property. We still continue to maintain that property, pay the bills on it. If I may approach, I can hand you.
That's fine.
Okay? This is, my wife probably wants this back, but that is a copy of the latest water bill from Rural Water that still shows Julia D. Taylor. The, like I said, Logan County, we're still paying the taxes, and it's still under Julia D. Taylor's name.
Yeah.
So.
You want to see that?
So I felt it important to bring that point of order, for whatever reason that you, you may have, but I just wanted the truth to be known. We have, and my wife actually wrote Joe a letter and told him that we have absolutely zero objections to his property being rezoned.
We have that letter, so.
Okay, very good. So, and I came here to say that and to answer any other questions that you may have concerning the Taylor Family Trust and that property, that, that specific piece of property.
Okay. Any councilmen have any questions?
I would just like to make one point of clarification. I'm reading the note that was written from Councilman Taylor, and in there, he indicates that he objects to the rezoning of this property, but he does not indicate anywhere in that letter that he owns the property.
Well, if, if we're looking at the same letter, at the bottom of the letter, it says Jeff and Debbie, Debbie Taylor, 822 West Lake Road. That is the address of Mom's place.
Yes, but it doesn't say that he owns it.
No, but it implies.
Okay. I just want to make sure we cleared that out.
Yes.
Okay.
This is your, if you want that back.
So do you all, do you and his sister plan on living in that property? Is that the deal?
Oh, no, no, we, that property will eventually, hopefully, become Jeff's property. We have been unable to convince him to take ownership of it. So we continue to maintain it, continue to pay the bills on it, continue to take care of it.
So you say eventually it'll, you hope it'll become his residence?
It's, it's supposed to. Now, if he doesn't agree to that, you know, he, he has not, to this point, agreed to take possession of it.
Okay.
So.
But clearly, if that is the.
If that is the case, he will eventually.
He, he would have some interest in this ongoing.
But it, I mean, we could make that same case for anybody who might attain property somewhere close to this location at a later date.
Is there cattle on that land right now?
I'm sorry?
Is there cattle on that? There's 70 acres roughly, right?
That's, yeah, and yeah, there are cattle on it.
Is that the intent, long-term?
To have cattle on it? There's been cattle on that property for how many years, Bob?
Seventy years.
Seventy years.
I know that Boris and Judy built that house on that property in 1953, and there have been cattle on it ever since then, I know.
Well, do you know if that's Jeff, who is the?
I, I can't speak for Jeff.
A parent heir.
I can't speak for Jeff, whether or not he's going to continue.
All right.
To have, but he does have cattle on it as we speak.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Brent?
No, not from you.
Okay.
I'm good.
Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you all for your time.
Okay. Thanks. Bob?
My name is Bob Freeze. My address is 916 South Birch here in Guthrie, and I came in support of Joe because I grew up at 822 West Lake Road, and we have had cattle and occasional horses. In fact, we used to rent the property where Joe's purchased and all the places all around the lake. So as long as I can remember, we had had agricultural goings-on there, whether it was cutting hay in the bottom that was the floodplain, or cattle or horses. And I don't really see any, I applaud the city manager for the suggestion that he made because I think that's the way the city's supposed to work. You're supposed to try to find some kind of a common ground for the city and the citizens. And as far as Ed's point, we were trying to make sure that things weren't misrepresented to encourage a decision one way or another, as far as ownership and why somebody would object or something like that. But gosh, I'm thrilled that there could be a great outcome with the manager and Joe.
Okay.
Are you in support? I'm just.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other public comments? See, I'm a little bit. I'm a little bit confused in why, if you look at all the surrounding properties, agriculture down in there and behind it. I know the land. My land butts up almost a part of it on the far side, and so, I know it is. And so why that one little piece in the bottom was zoned R1 is, baffles me. It really, truly does.
Well, we can't change, we can't change that.
We can change that.
No.
We can't change that now. We can change that down the road, as I think Lee Roy has identified, and Mr. Evans identified that that would work for him.
Yes, and to answer your question, back when that was zoned, it was zoned the entire mile.
Why don't you come on up here so we can make sure we get your face on camera here?
They zoned the entire mile section at once with one stroke. So there was probably not a great deal of objection because like the, the Taylor property, they were grandfathered in, they've still got cattle on it, and, and I agree with you completely. It has an agricultural feel. There are horses, there are cows out there a lot. My point is, not, it, R1, R1 zoning doesn't fit all of that property, and so that's why I'm asking for a rezoning.
Yeah, all right. All right.
Yeah, I think we covered it before, I think, but I don't know if we covered it tonight, just for the record, to make sure that you realize the planning commission recommended now a rezone of the whole property. Just wanted to make sure that we brought that forward, just as a reminder.
Okay. Yeah, but they didn't have the option of partial zoning.
Correct, that was not presented. I came later, after I visited with the city attorney on what op, as we were exploring options.
Well, I think clearly part of our role is to protect the, the community and the neighborhood, and, and part of that, speaking for me, part, in my mind, there are two issues. One is, I'm concerned about a slippery slope of taking an R1 and making it agricultural, and what does that, does that open up the, the door to other people coming in requesting, maybe not adjacent to flood, flood vein, or floodplain zone, but maybe so? And, and how do we, how do we split the baby? If, if we, if we approve that, then the next person coming, how do we, I think we set a dangerous precedent. Just a minute, I'm not through. Okay. So that's one of my concerns. The second concern was that we were talking about. The second concern was that we were talking about the 14 acres, and there was no guarantee that, in fact, we talked about, and Mr. Evans painted the picture, of the horses in the floodplain, a nice home, which I'm sure is the intent, close on the east side, closer to the neighborhood. But in fact, when... If we approve this, we are saying the whole thing, we are saying the whole thing is agricultural.
No, we're not.
No.
We're saying to... We're saying to rezone the bottom is agriculture, and the top is R1.
No.
We're not going to approve this.
That's not what's in... That's not what is on the table in front of us.
Okay, we...
Well... Okay?
But that's not what we're discussing.
I think what's been presented by Leroy and the city planner, and Mr. Evans has accepted that, I think is a really good alternative.
Yeah, I do, too.
But in fact, that's not what is in front of us today.
Right. We can't approve what's in front of us today.
We can't, no.
Okay. But we can approve a dual split of the land.
Yes, we can.
At a future meeting.
At a future meeting.
But we have to also have some kind of verbiage from this council that... I'm not going to put the man through $400 or $500 worth of surveying, or $1,000 worth of surveying, and then to come back here and to have another vote if we're going to do it or not.
Well...
Okay. This is a small town here. And let me jump in real quick, because I want to address your point of not having... About this whole zoning thing. The gentleman was correct. I did look at zoning, because I had some zoning issues, too. Okay? At one point with a neighborhood near me, that they had some zoning issues from some spot zoning. And they did just zone it in swaths, C2, 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 all over the place, okay, where it shouldn't have been. Okay? So now, we have the burden, or let me say, the opportunity, to make it right, okay? And go in and fix this zoning that was a wide swath, okay? And narrow it down, like it should have been from the start. Everything's always easy to do a wide swath, okay? The devil's in the details, and that's where the pain comes in. People don't like the pain of the details, and so that's what we have to focus on. And... But let me finish one more thing. And if other people do come to this council with a similar scenario, so be it.
That's right.
Okay? Let them, because they've wide swathed as well.
This is a per-case basis, and that's why we're here.
I think what you could do tonight, you can't adopt this ordinance, or an ordinance that's not been prepared, but to provide some documentation to the owner, Mr. Evans, is you could make a motion to instruct staff to work with Mr. Evans to bring back a revised ordinance splitting a property along the floodplain line to be rezoned R2 and the other to remain A1 for consideration at a future meeting.
I make a motion.
And I would second.
Before the motion's made, can I ask one question?
So of all the neighbors around there, obviously including my wife and I, and I'm sure everybody spoke up, right, about what their opinion is on it? So what... How did that go down? I mean, how many of the neighbors said yes, or no, or I don't care?
Well, let me give you...
The adjacent neighbor is not here, has addressed the council before, and he bought the property knowing that this was R1. Okay? And he is... Was not in favor, and I think part of it is because of the uncertainty of, you know, are the horses... Can the horses be on the east side or the west side of the property? And there's no... We have heard what Mr. Evans has said, but there, in fact, is no requirement, once it's rezoned as the proposal sits.
So the...
And then Mr. Taylor, miss... Actually, Mr. Taylor's wife sent in a letter of objection also.
Who is not a property owner there. But... So one person spoke up against this, that when they bought the property, they believed that it was R1.
Yes. Just as Mr. Evans, when he's bought the property...
Mr. Evans bought the property, believing that it was the other way.
Right.
Well, I think we've come to an... I think we've come to some kind... I think. I don't know if we have or not. I have a feel that we've come to some kind of a... Of a common ground in that we're going to look at, we're going to give instruction to split this land.
Yeah.
Isn't that the way you look at it, Cheryl? Isn't that the way you look at it?
Look at it.
That we're going to look at instruction to split this land and...
To work together.
Right. To leave the floodplain, A1 and the... I mean, A2 and the other residential, just like it sits. I mean, that's what we're looking at right now.
Yeah.
And that's what I motioned for.
I was just curious, as to the council, I mean, how many people actually spoke up, either for or against?
Not very many on this issue. Normally, people... I get blown up on my phone in our ward when there's an issue.
Yeah.
And I didn't on this. So I got one call.
So there was...
Someone about a mile away.
There was one against?
Yeah.
And that's it? Okay. Just wondering. Thank you.
Okay, you bet.
So with this motion, we will probably... This would have to be a no action on this exact agenda item, and then we just have...
We have to take some action.
I think it needs to be tied to this one, and I think the motion would be to instruct staff to bring a revised ordinance to a future meeting for consideration.
And then that's been...
Well, then I'm going to make a motion to instruct staff to do a revised ordinance to split this property at the flood... At the floodplain line to keep the top part residential and the bottom floodplain part A2.
A2. Second.
But that is for consideration.
For consideration.
For consideration.
Yeah. We're not making that decision. We're instructing staff to explore that with Mr. Evans.
Right.
And then to bring it back...
For further consideration.
For further consideration of the council.
Right.
Exactly.
Any other discussion? I mean, that's all... That's it for me.
Yeah. That's good.
Okay.
I think that's the right way to go.
So it's going to be no action taken on this specific item?
Item.
Item.
Correct.
Because we've modified it.
Yeah, we've modified it, so it has to come back later.
Okay. So there's not really a vote to take on that?
Well, there's a vote, I think, to take on the motion that ties to that specific item and changing it.
Might... No, we wouldn't have our council here when this is coming up.
We have to. We have to agree or disagree to instruct city staff to go forward.
Your action on the ordinance 3313 is advising staff to bring a revised ordinance back for further consideration.
Right. And that's what we're doing, tying to that ordinance right there.
Okay. I'm just saying, I'm not sure that that takes a motion.
Because it sounds to me like if we take a motion, then it's a commitment.
Well...
If that's done, then we're committed.
Well, it is a commitment to have city staff work with the homeowner to make it happen.
Yes.
I think Steve was on the same.
Yeah.
The other way is just take no action and do the ordinance.
I'm thinking that we need to take no action that, as a sign of good faith, we are instructing staff to get with Mr. Evans, to come back to us with a proposal to have a split zoning. I really feel...
Now, where's Randall?
I agree with him.
I really feel more comfortable with that than to take a vote on...
Either way works.
Okay.
I mean...
Either way. Just take no action, and we'll work with Mr. Evans, get a survey and a legal description. We'll prepare a new ordinance. We won't have to have another public hearing to bring the ordinance back to the council for consideration.
I think that's the way we need to go. So...
I disagree with that, but we'll do whatever. You're the mayor.
No action taken on item number three, instructing staff to work on a proposal for split zoning, A1 below... In the flood zone, R1 above the flood zone with the requester, Mr. Evans, and to bring it back as soon as possible to the next city council meeting. Item number four, discussion, possible action on resolution number 2018 to authorize submission of a 2018 recreational trails grant application to the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department.
That's what we just asked for.
Yeah, that was...
And I think that should actually be 2018-01.
Okay.
On the resolution number.
Sorry, that's my typo.
All right.
So this is the grant application we just reviewed in the workshop. It is an 80/20 grant match for a max of a $300,000 project, and we're looking at doing the first trail phase of our master plan that was presented. We had really good public attendance and some really good feedback as well, and I am here to ask for us to be able to proceed and have permission to submit the application. It's due on the 31st of this month, and we feel like we have a good project.
So moved. Second.
Now, can we only submit one grant?
We can only submit one application this time, but we can submit for the same grant next year, and we'd love to do that.
All right.
You can only get a max of $300,000.
Yes.
Or $240,000.
Well, it is a wonderful opportunity. I think all of us were a part of discussion earlier at the workshop. I think there is unanimous support for it, not only in the council, but obviously also in the community. I think we've got a great opportunity. So submit your votes, folks.
All votes, Rand.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval to move with... Towards resolution... On resolution 2018-1 on the submission of a recreational trails program grant application. Item number five, city manager report.
Aaron will start. We've got a few slides to show as we do this report.
Can we have one of those? Pardon? I thought we had one of those last time.
Oh, you love these things. I would point out, just for councilmen and audience, the way our equipment works, it's hard to synchronize the showing of the slides and my presentation, so Aaron and I get a little off-kilter. We're not quite Olympic material yet as far as synchronizing this, but we'll do the best we can. And then Aaron does a fantastic job of cleaning it all up and putting it out on Facebook as a report. But the first slide is showing the readers of Oklahoma Living selected Guthrie as the 2008 best, most beautiful town in Oklahoma. For nearly 65 years, Oklahoma Living has served Oklahoma's rural electric cooperative members by supplying information about their local electric co-ops, affordable electricity, and Oklahoma rural lifestyle. Through the years, the publication expanded to full color, 10 by 12, 36-page on average magazine. Their readership has grown to over 650,000, making them the largest publication in Oklahoma. This is quite an honor, if you think of all the communities and things in Oklahoma, for us to be picked by that size of readership as the most beautiful town in Oklahoma. Next item I want to touch on is our January sales tax report. I know setting from here, it's a little difficult to read that slide. Hopefully, on TV, it's more readable. But through the first four months of FY 2018 budget, our budget starts on October 1, the city sales tax revenue is 14% ahead of the same four months of last budget year. That is $277,000 increase in sales tax revenue for the first four months. 222,000 of that, and I'm rounding these numbers off, goes to the general fund, and 55,000 goes to the capital improvement fund. I would point out, before we get too excited, we need to sustain this sales tax revenue increase over and extend it period of time before we start budgeting higher sales tax revenue for our next budget, but it is a good indicator. Next thing I wanted to touch on, and we talked about it at our workshop, we have developed a master trail concept plan to try to tie in with a network, our backbone, all of our major parks eventually, with a trail system, a combination of shared roads and existing roads, and then new trails, and then also tie in downtown and our major retail area on Division Street, Walmart in that area. This can be expanded, but this is our initial master plan. This is a substantial undertaking that will take several years to complete, but the effort will be a combination of the various streets and trails. Later this month, if we could go, and this is when we build new trails, this is just a prototype of what we'll look at doing. There'll be the new trails that we build will be 12-foot wide to accommodate multi-use, where you can have walkers on one side, people rollerblading, and bicycles on the other side of the trail. Later this month, the city has approved that at tonight's meeting, we'll be applying for a Oklahoma Tourism Recreation Department for a Trails Program Grant. The grant application will be for $240,000 with $60,000 in match for a total project of $300,000. If funded, this first trail project will be... Will tie in from Second Street downtown via Fifth and Warner to the new Banner Park and the future pedestrian bridge at Ninth Street that, in a later phase, will take us to development of a trail system in what's commonly referred to as the Elbow Area. We'll pick that up area in our second grant application, this one's funded. And then I'd also like to point out, to tie into this, our next Safe Routes to School that is 100% funded grant that we apply for, we plan to apply for a sidewalk from Codderell School down to the new bridge. We'll have a sidewalk on it to tie them into a sidewalk system that they could walk to downtown, or they could walk down and cross over and go to the field trips at the new Banner Park and the escape park. The next slide is the Banner Park Concept Plan. Just a report on that, the Banner Park will have walking trails, playground areas that are handicapped accessible, the city's first splash pad, and a series of picnic shelters for family outings to the park. We plan to put the Banner Park project out for bids in February. The next slide, that's just an example of the type of picnic shelters we plan to build in Banner Park. We've got some larger shelters in other parks for family reunions and bigger events. These are more small shelters geared towards one or two families getting together with their children in the park to either walk, or play, or use the splash pad.
Are they going to build, like... They'll build those in-house and then put it up?
Correct. We will build the... Part of the project, as much as we can, we're going to do in-house, and we are doing the site work or dirt work for the park ourselves, in-house, leveling it out. And then the picnic shelters is something else that we will do. We'll buy the materials and build it in-house. With the exception of the rock work, we don't have a rock layer.
Okay. Sounds great.
Certified Healthy Community. In 2010, Governor Fallon signed into law the Oklahoma Certified Healthy Communities Act, which establishes a voluntary certification program for communities that promote wellness, encourage the adoption of healthy behaviors, and establish safe and supportive environments. This annual certification process recognizes Oklahoma communities for their outstanding efforts and achievements in actively creating communities that are healthy... That are a healthy place to live, work, learn, and play. The program is administered by the Oklahoma Turning Point Council and Oklahoma State Department of Health Center for the Advancement of Wellness. The city of Guthrie has again met the criteria to be recognized as a certified healthy community. There are three levels of certification, basic merit and excellence. Guthrie earned the excellent certification. The last item is more on a serious note. If you look at the two slides that Aaron's going to be showing while I make this part of the report, the city of Guthrie has 395,000 linear feet or approximately 74 miles of water distribution lines. It's my understanding that some of these lines are over 100 years old. The photos you are seeing on the screen is a sample of the mineral residue that has built up in these lines over the years. I don't want to alarm anyone, this is not contaminated, but simply minerals that have settled the lines over the years. lines over the years. The city has designated sampling sites throughout our water distribution system, and each month we send those samples into a lab, and the findings have continued to show that the water delivered through our water distribution lines meets DEQ's water quality standards. However, when we experience line breaks, flush lines, or do fire hydrant flow tests, these activities stir up the residue in the water lines, these minerals that can cause discoloration and impact taste and smell of the water, even though it's safe to drink. It's more of a pleasing effect.
Not at Ed's house.
His was a different issue. We still have to continue to be prepared on the water treatment side to deal with the turnover issues and the likes, and I think we've done some things to make strides there. But we also need to develop a systematic replacement program to replace our old water lines if we want to address our entire water issue. We are in the process of identifying priority areas to break the water line replacement project into phases, but even by doing the project in systematic phases, it will be a very costly project. And the reason why we would break it into phases, I'll give you an example, and it's not on the slides, but this one it is. This is a steel pipe, and you can see how the minerals have collected and settled and attracted itself to a steel pipe. This is a plastic pipe that this has been in service for 40 years, and we had a line break and replaced it, and you can see a lot of difference. It still has minerals that's settled on it, but it doesn't get agitated or move as easily as this. So, we would look at the type of lines like this one first, and then do these later.
Yeah.
So, we will prioritize, but even with prioritizing breaking phases, it's going to be a substantially costly project to replace 74 miles of line. First thing is, we're going to do a study, break it into phases, look at a cost estimate, and then we'll have to start discussing how do we fund some systematic replacement process.
What are you going to replace it with?
Whatever's the newest, the best.
Okay.
That'll be based on our engineer, just recommend this. That's my report.
Okay, very good. Good news and challenging news. But at least we're developing a plan.
Yes, sir.
Developing a plan. Great. Thank you, Leroy. Item number six, comments from city council. Councilwoman Paget.
Basically, no comment, except it is cold out there. Bundle up.
Councilman Taylor.
Just want to say thanks to staff. Again, I know some of the guys have been outside working in the cold weather, so it's not fun, but I appreciate everybody, because everybody's having to work in this kind of weather. And yes, Councilwoman Paget's right, it's cold, and so stay inside where it's warm and stay out of this mess. And I hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving, happy New Year and a Merry Christmas, and so, we'll see what goes on the next couple of months.
Okay. Councilman Wood?
Yes, to repeat that, it's welcome to the new year. Sounds exciting. Things are going great. Hope it's good for everybody. Hope they had a great holiday season. Yes, it is blistering cold outside. Please remember to bring your pets in. It is not good for them outside right now, so if you're cold, they're very cold. So, please be with them. And I understand, yes, thanks to staff, and especially Tenny having to go out and deal with this cold weather, water main breaks, and all the guys out working in this. It's not easy right now, so y'all be careful out there. Thank you.
Councilman Bothroyd?
Keep the faucets dripping.
Yeah.
I do want to make comment to, you know, all the city staff, obviously, police, fire, everybody else. In particular EMS, right at this, today. I've had a neighbor that had some issues. He's quite a neighbor up on the hill, kind of deal, and I'll tell you, their response time is shockingly amazing. And then, same thing happened the other day with someone down on Division near the drive-in. I mean, the shot, the response time of our EMS is something to be envied, guys, and something to be touted, by the way, because that allows seniors as well to have clear mind in living in this community, because that's a big issue. So, I just wanted to say congrats to them.
Very good. And again, a final congratulations to Officer Haddock for those 23 years of great service. If you weren't tuned in earlier, gave him special recognition on his retirement. Thanks to the, all of the individuals that were involved with the Martin Luther King Parade and Reception. It was, again, it was cold, but a good turnout, a good salute, good recognition, obviously, for a man with a significant vision that we continue. The Chamber Banquet is Thursday.
Who's going?
At the 6 o'clock, and so Dominion House, if you have, if out there in the viewing audience, if you haven't bought a ticket, I think there's still some tickets available. And also, United Way Banquet, I think they're celebrating another successful United Way campaign, and I know the city had a magnificent campaign, I think the biggest campaign that they've ever had.
Correct.
Of city employees in support of United Way, just another way in which our employees support the community in addition to getting down in the muck and the mud, and repairing brakes and water lines, and changing out control valves and so forth. And the Lions Chili Feeds coming up on the 26th, one of our civic organizations, so some opportunities to support that. We're still looking for some individuals that will be interested in serving our citizens on the ADA Committee. We still need some applications there, so think about that. A new committee that we're just forming, an advisory committee, but clearly we'll have a significant impact input into our community and for those individuals with disabilities. And as Leroy has identified, opportunity for our first park that has some disability playground equipment, so some great opportunity there. And lastly, we have still, I think, one opening on our forestry committee. So, again, if you're interested, if you're...
Two.
Two.
Two, two, we have two. So, if there's two of you out there that would like to go and hug trees, even if, even when it's cold, put your application in. We'd love to have you. With that, ladies and gentlemen.
My gosh.
We're adjourned. Thank you.